Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Holdman Jean Francois.
Here.
Holdman Johnson.
Here.
Holdman Ray.
Here.
Holdman Kleiner.
Here.
Holdman Green.
Here.
Holdman Witt.
Here.
Holdman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Orem is present.
Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city?
There are no speakers this evening.
Remarks to the mayor?
Good evening. So, welcome to the pre-election meeting, just so the public knows that the meeting was changed from tomorrow night, our usual first Tuesday of the month meeting, to today because tomorrow is election day. So we're going to begin with, our first slide is the, something that really got a nice play on social media, and that was, hold on. Technical difficulty. And that was the surprise, actually, because it's not something we sent in any letters for making requests that we'd be included in this analysis, but U.S. News and World Report, which is a very reputable magazine, we received an email from them saying that Middletown was ranked number 11 as the best place to live in New York State. Their methodology, they explain it, there's a link on their page, shows the methodology that was used. We're, you know, we feel that the recognition reflected our vibrant downtown, the investments in our community, not only in our downtown, but citywide, the investments in infrastructure that we've been making, our stable taxes, the strong schools, and a significantly improved quality of life, including since 2010, a 50% drop in crime through 2024. And if you look at the police numbers year-to-date, you'll see there's, continues the, that trend continues with another significant drop through October of this year. So we want to thank U.S. News and World Report. We certainly are going to use this in our campaign to convince people that Middletown is a desirable place to live if you're considering moving here, but also a place to do business and for many, many reasons, including our school system. So congratulations to the residents of our city. I know there's a few people out there on your old campaign trail that aren't very happy that this came out, but this is reputable stuff. This is a group that really, it's not one of those Facebook where you see that occasionally, like roadsnak.com comes up with, "Community A has a 50% crime rate increase, and here's a security system we want to sell you." This is a legitimate group, and so congratulations to our city, to our residents, and congratulations to the board and to all the city employees that helped make this work. Our next is the Transit Center Downtown Project. As you know, it's back on track after being delayed, COVID delayed it, and then further delayed by the Coach USA restructuring. We did have a ribbon cutting at the site, and as you know, this will modernize our access, transportation access, the parking slips, lighting, and support local commerce. It's a good thing for our city. It has a $7.5 million grant. It's primarily federal money funneled through the county, so we're appreciative of that this project is back on board. Next, we want to welcome another eatery in our downtown, onto North Street. It's a great example, another great example of what's happening in our community, what's happening with small businesses here in Middletown. Congratulations to the La Fata family, led by Mr. Croissant himself, Rakesh, his wife Suzie. This is their second business. I'm sure it will be a success, but they are once again investing in our community. And the grand opening was well-attended, and we encourage people to, once again, as we do with any small business, please give it a try. Next slide is budget highlights, and we will be having a Board of Estimate vote coming up next week, or is it this week, Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Thursday to 6:00? Well, whatever. We'll be posting all the highlights on the, the budget has been posted since Friday evening. The tax levy, I think for the-
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth, okay. The tax levy for, I believe it's the thirteenth straight year. We have met the state tax cap. It's at $24.6 million. That is the money that we assess to property owners generating taxes. The water and sewer mains will be consistent with the tax levy increase, again below the percentage rate that the state has set as a cap. Our sales tax revenues are projected at $15.7 million, in line with county forecasts, so we didn't play games with that. State aid is expected to be at $2.7 million, no increase, although the New York Conference of Mayors, we continue to lobby for an increase in state aid, which is not forthcoming. One good word out of Albany today, I guess the state budget is doing pretty good, so of course the lobbyist groups, which include lobbyists for local governments, are lobbying for a piece of that pie from the state. One area of concern is the $1.6 million in interest earnings will be applied towards debt payments. That's not coming directly out of our operational budget, that's coming out of interest that has been earned on money that's been borrowed. So, and a couple other, and I'm tying this all in with what we voted on at the Board of Estimate, the Goshen Water and Sewer Deal. As you know, we have many, many years of investment in our infrastructure. Our infrastructure is 100-plus years old, water mains, sewer mains, and expansion of our system potentially, but primarily it's water mains and sewer mains that are the primary cost. So, the water debt service budget has 33% of the fund budget, and cost is debt, and costs are trending up 7% annually. It's not sustainable, this system that we're doing now, and that's why we projected, and we've been getting into the business, of wholesaling water and sewer. The Board of Estimate this evening passed the Goshen, Town of Goshen Water District Deal. It's estimated, when fully implemented, within a couple of years, that it will generate about $2.2 million under current rates, so we will then be able to continue with our water and sewer infrastructure program under Mr. Toewiel, and we will have the ability to pay for it, and also not artificially passing the budget with, you know, one-time revenue, basically. The interest charge is one-time revenue. We also have some concerns about what's happening on the federal level, and going down to the local level, state level, whether it's pass-through funds, so we've begun looking at different options within city government on how possibly to redefine or reorganize certain departments. So we'll be including the council in that analysis as we move forward over the next few months. I think it's important for us to get ahead of the game, that we need to be prepared to address some budget cuts on the state and federal level. I mentioned that the $2.7 million in state aid, I think has been frozen for like dozen or more years. Don't quote me on that, but that number has not increased at all. Sales tax is now flat, so these are usually revenues that we could count on in the past, so that number is now flat. So we, as a local government, need to start examining operations, and how are we going to pay for operations in the future, while at the same time continuing our programs that we've put in place over the years. So the Goshen Water Deal is a big deal for us. There's a second component to that, which is the Indigo Deal, which is much more lucrative to the city, with a potential of over $5 million a year. Mr. Toewiel has begun that process by hiring the firm, I believe it's CDM, is doing the analysis. We have, the distribution part could be potentially with Goshen, Wayyanda, Walkeel, these are all townships that we're doing business with now, so we have an opportunity to increase our revenues over the next few years. So if we're going to increase the amount of infrastructure investment, we need to look at revenues other than user fees, which fall on our taxpayers. So, the same can be said for the sewer budget. So we have taken that aggressive approach over the years with water and sewer lines, some of them funded by grants, totally, some of them funded only 20%, but we must secure the funding mechanisms to sustain what we're trying to do. So Maria, if you could move on to the next budget, I mean, next slide. The Thrall Park donation, if I, we have some people here from the Run for Downtown organization, if they would come on up. Here with Dave and Anna Madden, and-
You're signing up, right?
What's that?
You're signing up?
Signing up. Yeah, I ran it this year.
Okay, Mr.
David Nano from the Piccolos, as you know, Jim Whittleford, representing the, himself. Andy Britto, who is our emcee at the event, he doesn't run either, so don't let him fool you.
I don't want to lose him.
You don't want to lose him. All right. The, just a bit of information, year-to-date, including tonight, the Run for Downtown has raised $186,000 that was invested in downtown Middletown. From the clock you see in the park to the Erie Way, what's it called again?
Pavilion.
Pavilion. I thought there was a more fancier name for that, the Pavilion. So, and a lot of smaller projects, they've been involved in everything that's going in downtown. So the beautification and the upkeep, and they're out doing a lot of things for us that are not even included in the $186,000. So, we wanted to make sure that we recognize them for their support. They have made a visible difference in the quality of life in our city. Dave and Anna, you deserve a lot of credit for all the effort that you put into it. I believe it's more Anna than Dave, but, but that's, so what? But we wanted to invite you here tonight for two reasons. One is to acknowledge everything you've done, and two is to accept that check for $30,000 that you will be donating towards the Thrall Park improvements that our Parks Department is working on with Maria Bruni, and I think Jacob had his fingers in it, as he usually does, a little bit. But we're going to be doing some nice lighting of the monuments, some sidewalks that'll give access to the, to the lighting, and Dave, if you want to give a little, a couple words on it, feel free to do so.
On Run for Downtown?
On the Run for Downtown, or the project we're talking about.
So Run for Downtown just finished its 19th annual event. We're coming up on our 20th anniversary next year in 2026, which we're really excited about, and $186,000 back to the city of Middletown, which is, you know, I mean, it's a significant contribution, and we're really proud of that. And we've worked with Maria and the Parks Department for Run for Downtown, oh, I'm sorry, for Thrall Park and the improvements, lighting up the statues, adding some additional walkways, and just general improvements to, you know, make that space more inviting for the public. And we're really excited about our relationship with the city of Middletown and moving forward in many more years of Run for Downtown. Thanks.
Great job.
And, oh, you want the check? Yeah, I do. Yeah.
You're going to check it?
I want to make sure it's signed.
All right.
It is, so, there it is, $30,000. It's made out to Miguel Rodriguez.
I'm running now.
So, that being said, good news, we, the next slide will be the Recap 60th Anniversary Dinner. Myself, Maria Bruni, Caitlin McNamara from our Economic Development Office, Leonora Liz, Rick McCormick, and Maria Ingracia from Congressman Ryan's office, all had the opportunity to attend their 60th Anniversary Dinner. During the dinner, they brought me up to speak and to address their group regarding the ONW project. As you know, Recap/Head Start is our prime tenant. They're taking the entire building. We're expecting to close on or before November 19th on the tax credits. The tax credits, because of the, they're called new market tax credits, combined with the historic tax credits, are what makes this project doable for us. We've represented to you along, there still will be a city subsidy into the project, but it is a worthy project for this community. So we got up and explained to the crowd of Recap supporters, they obviously were very receptive to the idea. I want to thank Recap and Charlie Quinn and Heather Decker, who have put a lot of work into the tax credit development, along with Leonora, Maria Bruni, and Caitlin on our staff. It is a lot of work. We have told Leonora that we will never do a new market tax credit project again, but because it is so much work, and, but we are getting a significant amount of investment from this project, from this tax credit. So, to cap off their 60th anniversary, they will then, we will begin, hopefully, by the end of November, awarding the contracts to the four prime contractors, and the second phase of the ONW project will continue. I know Maria and Caitlin had a call today with our consultants on the project. I saw some of the email exchanges. We met with Alex Smith today for the, for a final review. There's some language change that needs to be put into some of the agreements, but other than that, it looks like it's full speed ahead with a closing honor before November 19th. So that's very exciting. So the next is the Middletown Emergency Food Assistance Program. The application, applications will close tomorrow at 4 o'clock. We thought it was going to be today at 4, but we decided to extend it till tomorrow at 4 because we have the opportunity for more money to be injected into it. We want to make sure that we cover everyone with these distributing, the distribution of the $50 vouchers. If you heard that the judge ordered Trump to release the $5 million for the SNAP program, which I believe they have agreed to do, but it is not covering the entire amount of the SNAP award. It's like half of, a little under half of what is necessary on a monthly basis. I don't know what's going to happen with it, but we're going to move forward with our distribution on Wednesday of the $50 vouchers. As of earlier today, we had well over 200 people signed up. Maria has been able to identify a few more dollars in her budget, so we're over the $10,000. We also have some private donations that have come in, and support from individuals. We are also doing collection in the lobby, which was very successful, for the Recap Food Pantry on Mills Street. So, the program is, you cannot believe the concern of people here in our city. You see it on TV, and it doesn't touch you as much, but when you have a grandmother calling up and say, "We have three cents left on our EBT card, no money for the weekend," it moves you. And the staff is getting pretty much moved by it, our recreation staff, Ray Lynn and Nicole are handling it on their end with their staff, so the amount of people will probably hit over 300 families that we will be helping on Wednesday. We are now looking at, if it does get extended, what can we do, because the federal money, as you know, can be used for this. There is a question of whether the city can put money into a program like this, since we are not a social service agency. Alex has been in contact with New York Conference of Mayors, and attorneys from other cities have also been in contact with them, because we're all facing the same dilemma, where our residents are asking for assistance. A first look at the state regulations would say that we are not allowed to donate money to a program or to a food pantry. That would primarily be a county function, since they are social service operators in Orange County. But Conference of Mayors got back to us and said there is a strong possibility, and at this point, a real possibility, that by declaring a state of emergency, similar to what we did with COVID, that we would then be able to put some city funds into this type of project. That, of course, will then lie with the body that appropriates the money. I would be very supportive of it. I don't know what the numbers are, we don't know how long this thing is going to last, but we're trying to put together another model on the program, because if you, under the emergency that we're doing now, if you came in and you're a single person with a SNAP card, we are giving you $50, but if you're a mother with three kids, you're also getting $50. So we're looking at amending the program to see how we can amend the program to address family needs going forward, too. So hopefully it won't happen, hopefully Washington will get to its senses and fund the program, but we know we can't count on that, so we want to be prepared. We're in the process of doing that now, and, but for the program that's in place now, Wednesday we will start distributing cards. Those who can pick up will pick up, those who can't make it to the rec center will be dropped off at their residence to them. So if you have any questions, or any concerns, or any families that need assistance, they can call my office, or they can call the rec department. That is primarily who's handling it. We started taking applications here, too, because we did have some walk-ins that were unable to get to the rec center. We are also doing it by phone or doing it online. So if you have any emergencies, we can refer them down to the Recap Kitchen, Recap Pantry on Mills. Onto the brownfields. I want to thank the Pattern for Progress and Kate Stryker for the tremendous work she did at her last meeting with the public hearing. I have not heard any negative feedback at all for the plan that we are in the process of developing. I know Kate and Paul, it's third word, representatives, are very supportive of the, what we're trying to do there, they're instrumental part in the development of, in the plan also, but we're, we're focused on maintaining the open space, rehabbing the buildings, and limiting the types of uses at the facility to protect our history, and also to add some economic development. So the Boa grant will make it very attractive moving forward, so if you have any feedback, I have not received anything negative, only very positive, please share with us so we can share it with the Boa committee. And last but not least, is tomorrow is election day, and regardless of how you're going to vote, please vote, because I can tell you one thing that people in other offices on higher levels look at for a community, is they look at how, quote, "powerful" you are, and that judgment of power is by how many people vote in that community. So we need to have a good turnout. Early voting was well over 1,200 people at the poll. We have, I think, 400 or 500 absentees that are out, assuming that even half of them come back. We're over the 1,500 mark, plus tomorrow, plus more absentees coming in, so I just urge people to go out, exercise your right to vote, and we'll all be better off on Wednesday when all the signs start coming down. So thank you all. If you're a candidate, take your signs down as early as possible. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for the mayor? Paul McCliner.
I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for taking the lead on food assistance for our community. I think it's very important, and I'm really glad to hear that we're ahead of the curve. Thank you.
You're welcome. You know, one point is Newburgh, you know, we did start getting calls from different groups. Beacon called, Newburgh called and said, "How are you, how are you doing it?" And, because we all face the same legal issue of injecting city funds. Newburgh started with $150,000, because they have a program, a federal program, that's much larger than ours, so, and they didn't appropriate certain funds. Our federal program is much smaller than the Newburgh program, and that's based on need and all that, but, but what it did do, it started getting communities in this, in this area talking about it. We were the first out of the box on it, but not, certainly, we're not just a one-shot here. We're going to try to continue the program, and as I said, I support using city funds if we need to.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Remarks to the department heads, fire chief?
Good evening. October, we ran 125 calls, which is higher than our usual. We average about 100 calls a month for the 1,200 for the year. We did 125, one-third alarm fire, had two dulcet nav, budget beverage, which was heavily damaged, and then the little store attached to it was damaged also, just mostly due to smoke and water. No fire actually got into that part of the building, thank God for the firewall. Still waiting for the fire investigation report, we don't have that yet. I think due to the amount of, the price of the loss, they had to get a private fire investigator in there, as per their insurance company, to do the investigation. We got three new members, I think you guys will probably be voting on next month, that are getting voted in tonight. We got three, four members of the ones that we've been voting, not this month, next month. And we got three new members signed up for the state firefighter one class, which is great. It's showing a little more commitment from them, it's 138, 39 hours now. When I took it, it was 36 hours. So it does show a commitment that the membership that we're bringing in. We are starting, we did start a mentoring program to try to keep the younger members in. We've got a big influx of Middletown High School students, which is great. They're showing the interest in the community, they're coming around to the drills, the meetings, you know, so that's also been great. Last time I was here, we discussed one of our problem trial buildings, and I would like to thank the police chief and Jacob and his building department for the assistance that we've had, because now it's really becoming a safety concern, it's not just the amount of calls we're running there, but the taping of the smokeheads, the removing of the smoke detectors by breaking them and removing them from the ceilings, discharging extinguishers with inside the building, so there is no fire protection whatsoever. It's a concern our end. We've had meetings within our department on pre-planning that building, because we're afraid one night we're going to show up 2:00 in the morning and people are going to be hanging from the windows. So, but the, the building department has taken the lead, and I do appreciate that, Jacob, thank you. So hopefully we get that rectified. I know whoever's on our system sees the calls to the property that we're going to quite Something also that, Andy Wackowski is now our fire inspector, I don't think he understood how many emails he's going to be getting from me. We do have another property that is now doing concerts inside the building, and when they're in there, they're shutting off the fire alarm system, which we were not notified of. So we found out the other night when we had a call there, that they said, "We don't know how you got the call, we shut the alarm system off."
Supervisory.
So I turned that over to Andy Wackowski, he's, you know, he's been in contact with them, that it's okay to put the system on test, and it's also, but you have to, there's requirements in the state code that you have to have a fire watch, and he needs to get that report and when this is going to happen, before it happens, instead of after it happens. So, but we're moving in the right direction, we're keeping him busy, I'm sure he's been busy with Jacob and the mayor also, and the police department, so he's been great since he's taken the position, and he's always available. He's never kicked me to voicemail yet, so that's a good thing. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the fire chief? Thank you for, Chief, Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank my department, the way they pivot when the Middletown Emergency Food Program, how to figure out the funding for the program to assist Patty, Gina, and Caitlin, they're just amazing, again, how they can pivot and let's work on getting the job done. Again, how they can pivot and let's work on getting the job done. Also, the Paramount, we had a successful hearathon weekend. I'd like to thank Eileen for that, for her knowledge of putting the program together and making it a success. And Stephanie and Joseph are working for the tree lighting. We're going to have an announcement later this week regarding the tree, the tree lighting, and all those festivities as well. And thank you, Run for Downtown. Amazing everything you guys do. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Maria? All right, Maria, thank you.
Good evening. I'll be relatively brief tonight. Alden and Massey, as you know, we have very little rain to speak of, unfortunately, so our storage right now is about 74%. That's how much our reservoirs are filled, which we are, you know, we're still in very good shape. Just to give you an idea, last month, we had only 3.6 inches of rain. Our average is 5.11. So from three inches to plus to five, five inches, we should have had on average. The month before, it was similar, about two and a half inches versus five and a half inches. So with that, our water department worked, got our, all our skimming operation in place, all our pipes tested from last year, so that if we have to skim from Indigo Creek, we'll be able to, once we have some significant amount of rain, that's the only time we can skim, because we have to meet requirements of the DEC, of minimum discharge, leaving the stream and so on, before we start pumping. And that's a reminder how much we need the additional water source. Hopefully, Indigo will be very fruitful for us and for the future of the city of Middletown, like the mayor was saying. Extremely, I mean, extremely monumental. This is monumental what's going on with the agreement with Goshen, with the, with the build, hopefully building the reservoir or groundwater source in Indigo that will supplement what we have. This is what the city has been working for with the dream since, I have reports since the 1936. I'm not exaggerating. So it's, it's, it's tremendous, and as you can see, development is all around us. Everybody is looking for water. You cannot build anything without the water and the sewage service as well. So, and it's happening. It's building all over the place. It's, you see the, you see the traffic, the amount of traffic on 17 or our local roads. It's just building, building, building. So obviously, it's going to have to be done thoughtfully, the construction, and that's the planning board and different, different communities around us. But we need the water, and that will supplement the jobs and economic development, like the mayor stated exactly. Leaves pickup started today, in the third ward, and then after that, we'll go out, we will go out throughout the city. Please remember, don't dump leaves randomly everywhere. Make sure they're away from the intersections, because it's a safety concern. Make sure you stay within four feet from the curb, not, don't push it in the middle of the road or anything like that. Don't make the pile too high. You don't have to do it all at once. We'll go through the third ward and then finish go around the city, then we'll come back again. So, you know, do not overwhelm the road. If you see people piling up too much, just work with us, and when the guys come in, we'll come back again. Like the mayor, I thought he's, he had it in his agenda is, Orange County, Orange County Parks Department, they're, they are doing the Heritage Trail, Section Three, which is from West Main right here all the way to Ingrasia Road through Davish Park. With the, with the support of the mayor and the county, we voted with the Orange County Transportation Council for another $3.5 million in support of the Orange County Parks request, and that will, will be tremendous improvement, again, another injection of funds into this third section of the trail. And as you know, Section One is tremendously used and really improved the quality of life in the city and gave us an option for recreation and for residents of Middletown and the surrounding areas. It's a tremendous, a tremendous project, the Heritage Trail, Section One, and now Section Three, we're dumping more money into it, and it's going to be a really beautiful. And that's, again, under the leadership of Orange County Parks. The mayor spoke very well about the Goshen Agreement. It's monumental, and, and that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
City Treasurer. Oh, she left. All right, Police Chief.
Make it easy for you. Good evening. I have nothing unless you have anything.
Nicely done.
Alden McCliner.
Thank you. Can you tell us the Junior Police Academy, what state it's in, and what, I know you said there were a lot more people this time than, than expected.
Yes, so I believe you're referencing our Youth Leadership Academy that we host.
Yes.
Yep. So we run a Youth Leadership Academy. This is about our fifth year now. We run a fall session and a spring session. We try to run about 25 individuals. We utilize our SROs and school resource staff to find and identify individuals that might be best suited for the program. So the program is once a week. It's a, right now, it runs on Wednesdays. This year, we had 38 individuals sign up for it. We did lose a couple, so we're down to about 32 as of the other day. It's an amazing program that won the city funds, so thank you. We do get some grant funding to help offset that, and what we do is we try to take the obstacles out of anything that would cause one of the youth not to be able to show up. We utilize a bus to pick up kids that need transportation. We drive them to our location. They start off having a snack, a little bit of downtime after school, followed by a lesson, whatever that lesson of the day is. There's an agenda and a curriculum that goes along with it for 12 weeks. At the conclusion of that, they get to sit down together and have a nice hot meal from one of our local restaurants to share and enjoy, and then we make sure they all get home safely, whether they get picked up or we drive them home, so that we, again, we take those obstacles out. We have found over and over again that most of them ask for more, when, especially at the end of the, the session, when I speak with them, when I ask them what they would like to see different, they traditionally all say they want more time, want more events, want more opportunities. So we do what we can with the program. We'd love to expand it, but it does take up a lot of resources as well. But it's been very successful, and we definitely appreciate the support that you all have given us to allow us to continue doing these programs.
Will there be a graduation?
Yes, there's always a graduation at the end of them. Typically, they're done right here in this room. We have done some in the past, also at Mount Carmel Community Center, so once I have that date, I will definitely share that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Alden Johnson.
How many hours is the class, like three to six, or three to?
Yeah, it's about three, three and a half hours total, yes. By the time with, there's a little bit of buffer on the front and back for transportation needs, and we're actually working with Mr. Higby to acquire a little bit bigger bus to make it a little bit easier for us.
Great. Sounds like a great program. Thank you.
Chief, for the age group.
We take from middle school from about seventh grade all the way up to seniors.
Thank you. All right. All right, thank you, Chief. City Clerk.
Good evening. Just a reminder, as the mayor mentioned, Election Day is tomorrow. The polls are open from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM here in the city of Middletown. If you don't know where to vote, please contact us at the City Clerk's Office, 845-346-4168. I'll be more than happy to help you and get out and vote. Thank you.
Any question for the City Clerk? All right, Public Hearings and grievances.
Good evening. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 3rd, 2025, on or as near to 7:30 PM as possible in the Common Council Chamber, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 475 zoning, and in particular, Section 475 dash 21.1 DMU Downtown Mixed Use District. Any all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against a proposed zoning amendment. The complete proposed zoning amendment is available in the office of the Common Council Clerk and on the city's website.
This time, the public hearing is open. Anyone from the public? Any council member? Have motion to close. Massey, second. Alden Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Remarks of Alden, Alden Massey.
I'll just be very quickly. Tomorrow is Election Day. First of all, I want to thank everyone that has voted early or has voted absentee, and I would ask that, please, people, if you haven't done either one of those, that you do take the time to go out and vote, because as the mayor said, it is very important. We have some elections going on that include some of the members as board, and then obviously we have the one, the most important one for the mayor and council president, although the mayor's contested one. So your voice does matter, and the way you can do is get out there and vote, and I'm hoping that you will support our team. Thank you.
Alden Witt.
Thank you. I would just like to add on to the, in our time of food uncertainty, the, the Middletown School District in association with SNAP Ed and the Walden Savings Bank are teaming up to donate and distribute 300 boxes filled with fresh local produce. The distribution will be on Thursday, November 6th, at Carter Elementary School, the old Mechanics Town, from 5:00 PM until 7:00. Please enter the Shut Road Extension Lot. That's now the front of the building, and when you get in, there's a long roadway. Please make a right, and it's going to take place in the parking lot. This is open only to Middletown School District families. In fact, they will be checking the Infinite Campus to make sure that registered parents or guardians are participating. So we want to be fair to everybody and help our community. It's one box per household, and families may not pick up boxes for other households. Again, there are 300 boxes and just trying to be fair to everybody. So we're also on our website, putting together a list of resources. Middletown with the mayor's office has been very helpful. Town of Walk Hill has as well. We're trying to get it all in one place. There was a county list going on, or going around in different places, and we're, there's a place on our, on our website, the enlarged city school district, Middletown website, under community, that shows resources, not only where you can receive food, but also donate. So if that's something that, either way you want to go on that, that's where the opportunity presents itself. But it's only Middletown people for Carter on, on Thursday. And just a second thing, congratulations on our, to our city for getting this designation from, designation from U.S. News and World Report. Pretty incredible. And for me, like, looking at this, what I thought was interesting is, of course, we still had people who were bashing it, which made absolutely no sense to me, but it wasn't us coming to the defense, it was the people who live here who were coming to our city's defense. And I just, to me, that was a really good sign, like, they, they, there was a sense of pride that we had achieved this designation, and people just didn't feel, like, at least how I took it, that we weren't going to have this dumped on us. So, so thank you to everybody for sticking up for us and for themselves. Thank you.
Alden Green.
Thank you. Yet again, Middletown shows up and is there for our residents and is there for our families and shows leadership throughout the, the county and state. So thank you, Mayor, for, for taking the helm on the food assistance. I know it's really important to, you know, those who, those who need it, especially this time of year, when we're preparing for Thanksgiving and all these great celebrations and our tree lighting and that. So, you know, I know that it's going to hit harder this time of year than, than, not that it wouldn't hit hard all the times of years, but the times that we really think about it. We will be having our constituents meeting here on Monday, the 10th, at 7:00 PM, and I believe the mayor is still on board for the first little bit to thank you, to show up and, and take some questions, be in the hot seat for a little bit, so we hope to see you here at 7:00 PM on Monday. And please get out and vote, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM tomorrow. We look, look forward to some exciting results. Thank you.
Alden McCliner.
Thank you. Also want to congratulate the mayor and the city on the designation by U.S. News and World Report. I mean, it's not something that we entered a contest for, it's just something that we stood out, and that's really good to hear. I want to remind people that a week from tomorrow is Veterans Day, that's November 11th, and this year, they couldn't get together, whatever happened, so you either go to the Legion Lodge, the American Legion, or to the Elks Club. They will both be doing Veterans Day service celebration. And I also said, I would mention that next, next year, on October 3rd, that the Elks Club will be doing the Veterans Stand Down Day. They wanted to make sure that got out there early, so no one scheduled anything against them. So I keep that in mind. I'm happy, we're, really happy, we're stepping up to try and make up for SNAP assistance. I mean, we have $20 or $40 billion to give to Argentina to affect their election, but we're discontinuing the SNAP program. MAGA Mike Johnson has not had the house in session for six weeks, seven weeks now, and has refused to sign in Adalita Gralva, who was elected on September 23rd. So I, I think that's important. Bless her heart, she doesn't know how it works. Well, you're finding out how it works. It's disgraceful. And since we last met, they've demolished the east wing of the White House. When I lived in DC, that's the part of the White House I saw every morning when I would walk the dog. That's the closest to GW, and it's gone. So, oh, it was only the first ladies whose offices were there, so, you know, I think Eleanor Roosevelt is my favorite 19th, 20th century politician. Just destroy it. We're also attacking Venezuelan fishing boats. We say they're running drugs, but there's been no proof of that whatsoever. We're protecting pedophiles. That's why you won't swear in the Democrat, even though she represents however many hundred thousand people in Arizona's 7th District, and they're without representation for over six weeks now. So you can protect the pedophiles on the Epstein list. Congratulations to Mike. So that, I, I mentioned that, and I mentioned a lot of stuff. Our health insurance is already the worst in the industrialized world. Our health insurance and our health services are the worst in the industrialized world. Eleanor would have called it a human right. I, I don't know, there are still people who think that China pays the tariffs and that it's not just a tax on the American people. It's amazing. I get emails from the Times Herald Record, and thank goodness, after tomorrow, all those horrible ads will disappear from TV and hopefully disappear from the internet, too. But I, one of the, one of the emails I get is from the Times Herald Record touting their local news coverage, and how, the, the first one I got was on the same day that they talked about the No Kings March and, in Akron, and, and you're, every place to go in Akron. So I don't know how that fit Middletown, but when you go down to the bottom of these emails that tout their local news coverage, it gives their addresses, 40 Mulberry Street, Middletown, New York. So that's how out of touch they are. You know, in Germany, the people who voted against handing Hitler total power were the democratic socialists. So I would say tomorrow, I mean, we voted early, we've, oh, I want to say one more thing, the warming station opened on Saturday, and they're opening November 1st this year because it gets cold in November. first this year because it gets cold in November. And, uh, but they will also have training. If you think you can volunteer, you can go on the website and look at middletownwarmingstation.com, uh, a website that's maintained by my fellow alderman, Andrew Green. And, uh, the next training is Thursday, November thirteenth, go in after the board estimate meeting, or, uh, Wednesday, November nineteenth, and that's at seven o'clock at, at Mulberry House. So then, then you can volunteer to help house the homeless. So, um, what I would say is, um, Row A all the way, we need to send a message to Washington, and we need to send it that, I have said, all politics this year is national, and you need to send a message to the national politicians, MAGA Mike Lawler and others included, that we are small D Democrats, and the only way you get small D Democrats is voting for large D Democrats on Row A. Thank you.
Alden Ray.
Good evening. Um, quickly, Maria, I'm very excited because you just mentioned my favorite event of the year, the tree lighting, um, eleventh in the state, I mean, a little lower than I would have put it, but I'll take it. Uh, it's well deserved. I think we really offer everything here in Middletown. I think our food is better than anybody else's. I could go on and on. But tonight, I mainly would like to respond, um, to a social media post by one Mr. Joel Sierra, where he tries to impugn my character, which I find laughable, that he wants to get into a conversation about character with anyone. So in this post, he mentions that I once called him brother, and I no longer do that. And you know what? He's right. There was a time where I believed that Joel Sierra and his family were like family to me and mine. But what I did not know during that time, while Joel was posturing himself as my friend, at the same time that was going on, he was scheming and lying to replace me on the council with his brother at one time and then with someone else later. So even after discovering this now, all these years later, along with so many other lies that Joel Sierra has told, Joel had the audacity, after the death of my children's father, to show up at the funeral uninvited and attempt to speak to myself and my children, and then further took advantage of the situation and took a absolutely on purpose and targeted photograph with my children's father and uncle, which he then used in a political post last week, which my daughter found on Facebook and sent to me, so upset. So you know what, Joel Sierra, you, sir, have now feasted on my children's grief, and there is no further bottom for you to reach for. You are despicable and without conscience, and shame on you. And you know what? The mayor and I may not have always agreed on every issue, but we, we have always had is respect for each other and a love for this city. And in addition, I feel no need in this position to sit in anyone's pocket in order to represent the people of the third ward. Those are the people I work for, and that is who I answer to. And you know what, Joel Sierra, if you'd like some insight into what a real human being does when a person or family experiences loss or struggle, you should look to Mayor DiStefano for a little lesson in compassion and care. Yes, there was a time when nearly everyone in this room thought that you were someone you are clearly not, Joel Sierra, but here we are, and the Joel Sierra on the ballot today has shown us all just how reprehensible a person can be. You have no qualification to lead anyone. You lack empathy, remorse, and integrity, and when it comes to your political pa- platform, Joel, all I can say is that you are either nothing but a liar or completely uninformed and ignorant, and in neither scenario are you fit for office. Good evening.
Alden Johnson.
So I'd like to let that sink in for a little bit. So, um, this is not the first time that Alderman Ray has been targeted, as it were. If we go back to the, uh, the not-so-good old days of the Gaza Gang, when she and her daughter were targeted for speaking at a meeting. And back at that time, in my, my clever approach, I invoked the Three Musketeers, one for all, all for one. Maybe it was a little presumptuous of me to throw you all into the pot, so I'm gonna speak for myself this evening. Uh, Alderman Ray and I have worked together for ten to eleven years. Uh, she has exhibited remarkable due diligence. She has had a lot of personal, uh, challenges with her family, and she has risen above it, but today, unfortunately, is the day where she has to sink down to the level of this particular individual. So I will say to Mr. Sierra, what you do to Ms. Ray, you do to me as well, and I don't care for it. Um, the conclusion is self-evident. Your depravity knows no bounds, and let's hope that after tomorrow, you'll crawl back under the rock where you live. Thank you.
Alden Johnson for Swa.
Uh, good evening. Ooh, it's a lot to swallow tonight. Uh, one thing I'd like to say, Team DiStefano is definitely in effect for tomorrow. I would encourage everyone to get out and vote, and the message for the fourth ward, we one of the biggest ward in the city, but in the past, the numbers are not showing that, but I think tomorrow, that's gonna change. I encourage everyone to get out and vote. Let's make history tomorrow. Let's make it happen. On the other hand, DPW, uh, street department, I want to thank you guys for the hard work that you do, fixing our potholes and keeping our street clean. And sanitation department, you guys been doing a great job keeping our city clean. Your hard work doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Alden Tobin.
Uh, I'd like to celebrate the U.S. News, eleventh place, best place to live in their methodology, and, uh, you know, we see it every day because we're, we're really involved, but, you know, it's the state and fed help, the infrastructure, safe neighborhoods we live in, the downtown bid, access to healthcare, great schools, community, our park and recs department, the affordability of Middletown. This all makes Middletown a great place to live, and that is, uh, uh, you know, basically due to all the hard work that the, uh, the department chairs do, that we do, reading and finding out about these issues, and the leadership of the mayor. So it's not by accident that we're eleventh in the, uh, in the state, so thank you. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, the Maddens, Burdo, and Grillo for the run for downtown. You guys do an awesome job. Uh, I was just at the pavilion the other day for the Hispanic celebration, and that thing gets used for everything, ice skating, pickleball, community events, farm workers. I mean, it's a really a community hub, so it's a great addition to our, our downtown. And then the SNAP, I'm glad that we're stepping up to help our communities. Thirty-nine percent of children, or thirty-nine percent of the benef- beneficiaries of SNAP are children, and twenty are seniors, uh, and to see that this was used as a political tool, uh, that they had to have a judge come in and stop it is ridiculous. Uh, we have one side, uh, you know, has no plans, just problems, and really a lack of empathy, I mean, for our fellow human beings. So I'm glad that we're stepping up and trying to help our neighbors because it's the right thing to do. And I encourage everybody to donate to the food pantries because they're gonna be in need, uh, and we don't know when this thing's gonna end. Thank you.
All right, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing a proposal from Clark Patterson Lee for professional design to upgrade, services to upgrade the senior center bathrooms.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Kleiner, any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman, Jean Francois, authorizing a budget transfer within the Department of Public Works twenty twenty-five budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman, Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing the renewal agreement with charge rate.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois, any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing an amendment to city code section four seventy-five dash twenty-one point one DMU Downtown Mixed Use District as it pertains to parking and children's playlots.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing intermunicipal agreements with the town of Goshen for the provision of water and wastewater services.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois, any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries.
Audit. President, I move the accounts be ordered, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for the payment. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.